He lives in Sioux Falls.
Yeah, Dix moved to Sioux Falls now.
Did they?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I seen that they moved too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I did see that, yeah, a couple of months ago.
But this would be his cousin.
Yeah.
Did it?
Did it burn off several of the upris- uprights too, or just mainly do that back planking and some there? So it's all crazy something.
Yeah, burned some of his back plank is what I could see, and then some of the posts have burned at the top. So I'm thinking that it's gonna have to replace the post and something like that.
Yeah.
It only burned about halfway over.
I see.
But I don't know how. Let's have a seat. Sit by, follow up, get that.
Okay.
We call the meeting to order, start with Pledge of Legion.
Pledge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America. The eternal public for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, but never be unjustified.
Roll call.
Eckler.
Here.
Packard. Here. Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approve agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Eckler.
Yes, motion passes, approve minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Eckler.
Yes, motion passes, are there any visitors to be heard? I know.
We got new plat books. And you guys?
Super.
And if you wanna get Phyllis and Betty theirs, that would be great. What we do, farmers farm home publishers, is that this one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and what we do is we trade them. A subscription to Beacon for the books and a new wall map for our office, so. So it's a. It's about the same type of money if they paid us, and with the Beacon, it's a lot less work for our office. Than having to hand sort all that stuff for them, so. And on another note, the pictometry flyover is in quality control right now, so within the next couple of weeks, we should have early release of it. So, and I will send out an email to let you know when that happens. Okay, thanks.
Makes sense.
Thank you, any other visitors? Hearing none. Lane, the pod trailer. You're still muted. There you go.
There, that better?
Yep.
Okay. Um, we have a chance to get a new trailer from the Vermillion Fire Department. It was purchased through Homeland Security, like in 2005. And our current pod trailer is grossly overweight. It's a small, single axle trailer. This different one would be like a sixteen foot tandem. Would haul everything we need. It'll just be a transfer, but I would need your guys' approval to accept it because it'll have to go on our insurance and we'll have to get it titled and licensed through the county and all that. But my plan is to keep the small trailer as well. We'll use it for an Oak Point Pod if need be. Depend on other things, but Carrie can also use it probably in November to haul election stuff as well.
I'll make a motion to accept the Vermillion Fire Department pod trailer.
Second.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Do you know where you're gonna park them up or on Lane?
Their board may not wanna hear it very much. Cause it is bigger. But it. It would fit in there right now, so. I would probably try to put it into Clover Hall, and it. I know the new one that the fire department ordered isn't gonna be here until like June or July. So it'll be over the summer sometime when it all happens.
Okay, is this something that needs to be plugged in or not?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard. Yes. Eckler.
Yes, motion passes. Burn ban ordinance.
Okay, um, I don't see Callahan on, I don't know if he's in the in person or not, but. We, uh, I sent out a proposal for updating the burn ban. Excuse me. Basically, the wording in it is no longer valid, and if we needed to cite somebody, technically, we can't because. Grass Fire Index red flag is not a thing. So, um, it's just updating it to being able. To actually. Cite somebody if need be. With that. If we're, we're gonna change it order to the Weather Service terminology and not the grassland index. I would really like to throw in that. The, the watch aspect of it all. Is fire weather watches the correct term? After speaking with the Weather Service. They equate, equate that into like a Blizzard watch. It's something that is likely to happen in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. It will, it would just help. Alleviate that little bit of time if somebody tries to get a burn started right before the red flag. Warning is issued, and if anybody's been out driving around recently, the spring is gonna be a little tough, I think, at the moment. But I have not talked to Matt Canodel up in Irene, but Pullman called me last night, and I've spoken with Callahan. And Wakanda and Vermillion are in favor of increasing the strictness, I guess. But including the, not only the red flag warning, but the fire weather watch into the terminology. But ultimately, that's your decision, so.
If I may, to me, it just makes it clearer. You know, definitely gives you more of a. What hammer to enforce, but. I know the weather. Reports are often using the red flag warning. And that should become. What, second nature to people out there?
Um, I think it has already, I think every, most people obey it when they're. Aware of it. And I think the spirit of our current ordinance is good, I think it's there, it's just that that little bit of terminology is no longer correct.
So I, I'll move that we adopt the tighter terminology is reflected, and I think it was the third. The third iteration.
So as an ordinance, we'll have to do a first reading and second reading, but you know, if you wanna move to proceed with that, that's.
Yeah, which, which we don't need a motion for to proceed.
Just, I think it's a good idea.
Just whichever one, whichever one everybody wants, the third, third one, I believe Betty is the one Betty wants, and.
Yep.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
It, I think it makes it easier for residents to keep up on. On the possibility of upcoming. Fire, fire alerts and that sort of thing, and really, I think it's an improvement.
I believe that as well, and it also enables the dispatchers. It. The fire weather watch and the red flag is an issuance from the Weather Service, and they get an email when those are issued. They do not get any notification when grassland fire index changes. So if somebody's out wanting to burn and they call in to see if it's okay. It, it just makes it tougher for dispatchers to give an okay when they don't necessarily know for sure.
So is there a log kept, say I call in? And they go, yeah, go ahead and burn, or don't go ahead and burn, you know, don't burn. And the fire gets away, and I'd be like, well, they told me I could. Which is there?
Which brings us to the next thing on my list of things to talk about. For a couple of years now, we've been, fire departments and I have been talking about trying to set up an ordinance that requires people to call in controlled burns. Right now, you can go out and light it whenever you want, not notify anybody. It will help in that sense that the people who do call in, it is tracked, dispatch puts it up on their CAD maps.
Okay.
So, so that they do know, but if you don't call it in, we don't know about it either. So if possible, we'd like to set up an ordinance making it required that people call in controlled burns. The one thing that.
Burn ordinance, Lane, cause I thought it was.
It is not.
Okay, I thought we had set that, okay.
Not that.
To call again, or.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. Cause it's, it's amazing how many controlled burns get responded to. By somebody driving by and seeing the smoke. And then, you know, there's, nobody knows that it's a controlled burn, the people are actually there and doing everything right, we just didn't know about it, so.
Yeah, we've actually. About a year ago, I, I actually had three fires on. Controlled burns that I called in on Monday, but. Or last Friday, I guess it was, but they had, but a year ago, we had a controlled burn, I called it in. On a ditch, and probably an hour after we had the fire going, the sheriff's office showed up, cause there was another one about a half mile from us. That somebody had started, wasn't a controlled burn, or it was a controlled burn, but they hadn't called it in. And so that made, made everything, this guy shows up, and I'm like, what? I knew I called in, but yes, and he told me then, as soon as he looked it up, there was a log. Had your phone number, they get, they ask your phone number, location, and name.
Yep.
So I mean, it's, it's pretty well logged in, so if you did, if it did get away, if they thought it was getting away from you, they will call you. I've never had them call me, but I know that they told me that they would call and ask you if everything was all right, so.
Yeah, um, if it's something you'd like, I can, I know other counties do it, I can look at their ordinances and. Between Alexis and I and the fire departments, we can probably get something written up, but.
I think it'd be a good idea myself, that you have to call in, I don't think it's that big a deal to have to make a phone call, it's pretty easy. That way, they know who to contact if there is something, because outward where our farm is at, it's, it's right next to the interstate, so people go down the interstate, we'll call. Call it in, even though, you know, they just see the smoke, like you said, Lane, so. I think having it called in, it makes it a lot easier for the dispatcher, you know that, they've already had something on file, so.
Yeah, it was probably four or five years ago now, but we got a call for a field on fire, kinda right on the county line and all that. So Vermillion's heading north on the interstate, north on four seventy-one, and we meet the Beersford fire trucks. Coming from the north, looking for the same fire because somebody else called it in and hit Lincoln County. Nine one one, and neither one of us could find the fire that was being reported, so. It's. It can turn into a little bit of a clown show at times, too.
Yeah, it makes sense to me to move ahead with this. Same.
I'll put, I'll put something together and then get it out there for, for you guys then. Uh, and then the last thing that I'm on for anyway today. For the purchase of the new drone through Homeland Security, the eighteen-page policy manual that I had written previously was not anywhere near sufficient enough, apparently, for the federal government. So. I received a checklist of things that need to be included. And that document is now fifty-three pages, and I, and I sent it to Carrie yesterday for you guys to look at, but. Part of the requirements is. Having a records request policy. This, this would be for the offices to not necessarily doing their day-to-day business, it's for when somebody. Wants to request all records pertaining to. Whatever. Some case that Alexis is, you know, trying. Since we, it's all handled by department, apparently, right now, and maybe Carrie can explain it a little better because she actually deals with it, I've never had a request come to me. But I would like to set it as a county policy that everything goes through Carrie, so things can get documented. And charged, and we can pay the fees, and at some point, you guys will have to set the fees and all of that. I don't know, hopefully Carrie sent you the policy that I wrote up in the form. As the example, it's all following South Dakota state law. Which is why I put the SDCL. Codes in there. I guess it's, it's up to you, I'm going to adopt it at least for my department, cause I have to have something, I have to have it up on a website. And all that, I just think as a county, if we had a policy that is countywide, it would make things a little bit easier in the long run as well. But that's, that's up to you all.
I have one, I read it very quickly, so I may be incorrect, but I believe it says there's no charge for, except for postage, but isn't there a charge for printing also?
No, there is, there, there is, there is a, there is a pay fee or a schedule fee in there. Or a fee schedule, there we go.
Yeah.
I just added numbers to it, like a dollar a page for copying, and apparently, I am grossly. Grossly under, underestimating that cost. As the department heads at the meeting last week, or two weeks ago told me. So those are numbers that you would have to be put in. What you can't do is just outright charge for labor, labor, because that's a, that's a, not a finite thing. But your cost of gathering materials, you need to include. The wages and all that in there too, and make it sufficient that. You know. The only thing you cannot charge for is like meeting minutes, meeting agendas. Transcripts of meetings and recordings, those kinds of things, but everything else, there is a fee for.
I, I guess it's just the one line that says there are no charges, and I'm going, except for postage, and I'm going, that might need clarification.
Okay, let me bring that up.
Very early on.
Did I miss a sentence somewhere?
And I can't bring it up right now, cause then I'll lose you, but.
Yeah, okay.
It was, and then right under it, it says, yes, you'll be charged for postage, so I'm going. Except for actual costs or something like that be added to that.
Okay. Let's.
We can't say there's no fee when there is fee. Of some sort.
Okay, yeah, you caught me, I just put it in. I took it off my desktop, put in the files, now I gotta.
Of course.
Find, find my file.
A picky detail, but it's the one that the public would catch.
Yeah, no, no, I, okay. Okay, there is a requesters must pay postage fees if they choose to receive the information via mail service.
And above that, isn't there, either above or below, but I thought it was above that it said there are no fees, and then it says, there's postage fees.
Or no. I think there's no fees for government requesters.
Government requesters will not be charged.
Okay.
Uh, which would be like Yankton County requesting information.
Yep. As I said, it was quickly, but if that's, if it's limited to, fine.
Um, and public records may be inspected for free by appointment or during normal business hours.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we need a motion to accept the addition?
Just to make sure, Carrie, you're good with everything, cause it'll all have to come through you.
I am, we'll just have to. Get those fees in there that each department is charging and, and figure out a standard there, so.
And Lexi had a chance to look through all this?
Um, I sent it to her prior to the department head meeting, whatever, that's been now a week and a half ago. I have not heard anything back from her, whether or not she's actually had a chance to look through it, I don't know. And this is not necessarily every, anything we have to do today, so.
So let's, let's get everything put together and then we'll.
Then accept it, yep.
Yeah, that'll be the easiest.
Get it in final form and make sure it's gone through legal review.
Yep.
Yeah, cause I sent that drone stuff to Alexis along with you guys, you all as well. And that's up for next week, so. Add it on to them too.
One, one suggestion I'd make is on the form underneath. You might wanna include something about what form people want the records in. You know, just because that, you'll need to, you'll need to know that, and it would require a phone call or an email if it's not, if it's not there, so do you wanna buy email, do you want, you know, do you want copies made and so on?
The, under the Clay County use, there is, I did put those checkboxes for the form, for, for the media type.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I see, yep, I, I, I missed it the first time, all right, you got it.
Okay.
So Carrie, is it possible to have those printed copies to be a standard price? Just across the courthouse, I mean.
I don't see why not.
Just to keep it simple for everybody?
I don't see why we couldn't.
Well, yeah, it makes sense to have everybody at the same page.
I mean, ask the department heads if there's a reason why it shouldn't be, but. If we can just make it standard, that'd be a lot simpler. Anything else on that one?
Uh, not from, not from me.
Okay, so.
Because it's my understanding that each office may or may not charge different prices for that stuff, so that's. Up to you guys to pay, or Carrie, I guess, to kind of figure out a, a standard for.
So back to the, the control burn requirements, I think we skipped over that, we didn't talk about what the requirements were gonna be, right? We talked about the ordinance, but not, you have the requirements, I mean, are there things that you wanted for the control burn requirements?
Just.
Notification.
For the current ordinance was just updating with the language, but for the potential was just calling in controlled burns. Giving location, an owner's name or phone number, somebody's contact. I think that should cover most of it. And it'll give Alexis more stuff to deal with.
Yeah, with the, with the fire season that we're likely to have here, should we do a publication? In the paper?
You know, I know Union County is going to enact a commission burn ban today. Uh, so it's not based on whether, they're just gonna put in a long-term ban, so it's banned until further notice for Union County. That's the only one I've heard so far in the region or the area that's, that's going there already. You know. I don't know, i- it's a tough call. The amount of moisture we had in the last couple of weeks, all that really did was make the bare spots in my lawn slimy. So I don't know that we've really had anything of significance. I don't know, Travis, Mike, you guys are out in the fields or looking at them, I mean, we still got frost in the ground.
Right.
And according to Pullman, it's really, really deep in some spots yet. Like forty-plus inches, but I don't know.
I guess I'm not to that point yet.
I'm, yeah.
I, I think that we can, you know, mostly, if you're gonna burn, use some common sense, to be honest, I mean, not everybody's got that, I agree, but I understand, but, but that's basically what you need to do, I mean.
And how long have we had the current ordinance in place, four, five years?
Um, so twenty, twenty, twenty fourteen, I think.
Has it been that long?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's, it's been working, it's been a lot simpler process, because what if we don't meet? For two weeks and.
Right.
Didn't do it, we should have, and this is at least a day-to-day.
Right, and.
Got a two-week period coming up, you know.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, no, this is.
I would like to see the go with the, with the idea of ordinance saying that you have to call in, I, because I think that's the most important part right there. All right, cause if you call in, they, they'll tell you if there's a burn ban on, and now if you put that twenty-four to forty-eight hours in there, I think that's even better yet. I think we're giving it some teeth right there.
So Lane, do you have the township supervisors? Phone numbers or anything?
Um, I have their contact lists, yeah.
Because today's, today's annual meeting day.
Yep, and that's why.
Or text to them and just let them know this is coming.
Okay. Yeah, that's the reason Pullman couldn't make it today, I think he's talking contracts and all that with them today, so. Um, yeah, I'll get an email sent out to them. I don't necessarily think anybody's gonna have any hardship, cause the, the spirit's the same as it always has been.
Yep. But a thirty-second phone call saves thirty, forty people a lot of time.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Lane?
Uh, not from me today, anyway.
Anybody have anything else for Lane? Thank you. Rod, you on?
I'm here.
Okay, material bid opening.
Oh, gosh, let me have him bring him down.
We don't have them yet.
And. I'll have him make sure that they check the mail real quick, too, so.
So as soon as Carrie. Text them to bring those down, we'll skip over to the bridge inspection resolution. Text them to bring those down, we'll skip over to the bridge inspection resolution here in a second.
Sorry, I was late, did you guys make any decisions about the? Records requests?
That's what we were talking about when you walked in.
Yeah, your ears were burning, I think.
So, we're not doing anything today.
Okay.
Lane's gonna get the, or Carrie's gonna get it written up. Um, talk to all the department heads, we're gonna try and standardize the cost.
That was my only question, was just if everybody else had gotten a chance to weigh in on costs and I. Okay, perfect, sounds great.
Or we're gonna try and standardize the cost anyway, cuz.
And that's understandable, I, I know that Andy had some valuable contributions to that conversation beforehand and. What that could look like from a staffing standpoint, so, okay, sounds good.
So it'll probably be next Tuesday when we. Take that up, you ready, Carrie?
Yeah.
So we're gonna move to the bridge inspection resolution. So we just need to approve this, Rod, this is just like every other year, right?
Right, and I just, um. I haven't picked any one yet, we've had Johnson Engineering for the last. Fourteen years, I have no problem with them, but we have been doing business with Alteg and I just kinda wanted your. Opinion, they're both good companies, uh, like I said, I have no problem with Johnson's. If you wanna continue with them, that's fine. But I thought, uh, seems how we've been doing a lot with Alteg and they're on the list. Everybody on this list is pretty much. You know, nobody's any cheaper than anybody else, cuz the state only allows them to charge so much. So, you know, the price. The competitiveness is out of it, but you just have to have all your ducks in a row to get on this list, so. I didn't know what you guys thought, like I said, I'm. I'm uh happy with Johnson Engineers, but I could go with Alteg too, I figured I'd leave it up to you, what you guys. Prefer, but like I said, we have no, had had no trouble with Johnson's over the past.
I don't see any to, to change. As long as they haven't given us a reason to change.
Personally. Worked with somebody, worked with all the line.
Well, that, it's nice to, you know, we, one company isn't getting all the business.
Right, that too.
Yeah, that's.
If I could, if there's a historic knowledge, you know, they have been doing our bridge, the comparison from year to year. They can see and know.
Very true.
And I would assume this, the way they do it is a, is standard.
Correct.
So.
Everybody does it the same.
Oh, go ahead, Rod.
They have a Snoopert truck. So I mean, they can do everything else anybody else can, I mean, they have to, so. They, I'm, I'm with keeping it as Johnson's.
Okay.
You guys just have to. Vote on it.
I'll make a motion to stick with Johnson's and have the uh chairman sign the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Any further discussion?
Just one thing, I just don't understand why any county would turn around and hire their own and then pay the hundred percent of the, of the service. When the state will pay eighty percent of it. That's all I have to say.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes.
It doesn't look like we had any bits come in the mail this morning yet, so um, go ahead, open.
I can hear the mail person was there too, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they come pretty early.
So now we'll do the bid openings. Uh, see, Hancock concrete, bid on reinforced concrete culverts and box culverts. The twenty-four inch round culvert, thirty-seven, forty-eight a foot. And I won't read through them all, cuz Rod's gonna go over it anyway, make sure it's all correct. I'll just give an example.
The Beetle County bid packet was in your commission packet for the meeting too, so.
Barkley asphalt, bid on asphalt concrete.
Excuse me, what did Jerry say about the Beetle County, did we get it or not?
The True North, um, and then there was another one, but yes, we did get the Beetle County packets.
Okay, thank you.
Asphalt concrete, plant site loaded on county truck, uh, seventy dollars a ton.
Where are they at?
Sioux City. Merlin Roy out of Sioux Falls, this is bid on as- asphalt concrete. G one or G two rap fifty-eight dash twenty-eight is sixty-five, twenty a ton. G one or G two ram fifty-eight, twenty-eight is sixty-three, seventy. And that's at the plant.
Yeah, those are each F O B at the plant, right?
Yep.
Yeah, Merle Roy's out of Sioux Falls.
This is Midstates Equipment and Supply for road sealant and rubberized mastic sealant. Road saver two twenty-one, McAsphalt Max Seal sixty-six, ninety, dash two, comes in cardboard boxes at fifty-four cents a pound. This is the Beetle County metal culvert bid. So this is the True North bid. Twenty-four inch sixteen gauge. Round culvert at thirty-two, thirty a foot. Concrete materials hot mix bid. D two asphalt twenty percent rap fifty-eight, twenty-eight is seventy-four dollars a ton. G two asphalt sixty-five dollars a ton. G one asphalt sixty-five dollars a ton. And they're out of Sioux Falls. Actually, the D two asphalt is out of Yankton and the other two are Madison Street asphalt, which I'm assuming is Sioux Falls. Okay, this one's from Holloway, this is bid for crane work, crane men and driving pilings. Forty-ton crane with operator four fifty an hour. Uh, a cat three oh nine excavator with operators two forty an hour. Labor for a bridge superintendent's one eighty an hour, general labor's one twenty-five an hour. This is for, uh, this is from Brock White, this is for crack and mastic sealant. Road saver two twenty-one, seventy-three cents a pound. Mastic one leveling mastic, uh, sixty-two cents a pound. This is from Forterra, this is bid on concrete culverts, boxes, cattle passes and concrete bridge beams. And bid on bridge decking. And they're out of Rapid City. So a concrete pipe that's twenty-four inches is thirty-six, eighteen a foot. So. And that's the last bid.
There was only one bid for. Uh, crane work.
This Holloway.
Cuz one other request was made, but. Apparently they didn't send anything in then.
They said the crane work that they do is different than what you needed.
Okay, yeah, I kinda wondered about that, they're more picking stuff up and loading and.
Yep.
For building, I think, but, okay. I'll be up later to.
What's that, Rod?
I'll pick them up after bid, I didn't wanna spread around what I might have, so I stayed at the shop.
Okay.
And then, um, I already talked to Travis about this, but Union County posted their roads. Yesterday, the rest of us are waiting. Uh, we'll keep watching it here, uh, it stayed fairly warm last night, but I still did not see any. Uh, leaking on the road, so, um. I will let Carrie know to pass along to you when we put them on, but I'm thinking either the end of the week or beginning of next week. Depends on how this weekend turns out, if we get a half an inch of rain and no. Ice, that will help a lot in settling everything down, but I'll keep it posted, we're holding off as long as we can anyway.
Did you say Union County put theirs on?
Yes, yesterday morning. But the rest of us, Turner, Lincoln, Yankton. Um. We all felt that we could wait a little while yet. So.
I had a couple of calls yesterday and.
Yeah, I got quite a few. Soon as Union Counties went up, I got quite a few phone calls.
Rod, just out of curiosity, do you put those on the website?
Um, no, I, I guess I, I have it in the past, but, yeah, I could do that.
I'm just wondering, like, um, you know, we get phone calls occasionally too, and I'm just wondering if we can refer them to the website, or maybe. Maybe when you do post them, let me know, and I could put something out on the county's Facebook too.
Okay.
You seem to get a lot of, a lot of shares and a lot of response out of things that we put on Facebook.
Yeah, and I, I tried to do that, I just don't have time to catch up with that, I don't do it personally much either, so. But yeah, I'll, I will let you know when we put something on both sites. Hopefully they won't be on too long this year. Other than that, I don't think I have anything. You don't have anything for me?
No, I don't think we do, thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
Uh, the Norway Township Road Memorandum of Understanding.
So, um, I received that from the township attorney and uh looked good to me. One thing I would note is, um, I think the township maybe wanted to wait and have them address this first today. I just wanted you guys to see this and kind of simultaneously, you know, what comes first with the chicken or the egg here, that you have to agree to do it, that was kind of my concern is that. Um, do you guys need to agree to be a part of this before they can approve it? And I know since they don't meet as often, I wanted to get it in front of you, but then there was some reference to making sure that we had the most updated version. So to that end, it might be best just to wait and see what they do today, or, or do like a provisional. You know, presuming that they approve it, that you guys wouldn't sign onto it too.
Yeah, cuz they're hoping that we agree to it, so they, cuz they're gonna vote on it today.
That's, right. This afternoon.
At two o'clock.
Yeah.
And so they were hoping we would sign on, so they could present it.
So then maybe a conditional, you know, motion of provided they agree to it, that you sign on to this as well, just. Cuz I, I, you know, I think that it's a simultaneous agreement, I asked Rod if he had any concerns with the description of the actual. Chunk of roadway here, so make sure that we know very clearly what, what we're taking on then from a maintenance standpoint. And, um, you know, he can chime in here if he did, but his response is no, he thought it looked, looked good to him, so.
So, if we wanted, we can make this contingent upon them. Approving it at their meeting, and I'll, cuz I'm gonna go to their meeting. So if they approve it, I can, I'll just sign it there, if you guys, I won't sign it before, I'll just have the authority to sign it.
And then just make sure then whatever you, yeah, I'd bring a copy of what you're looking at right now, just to compare the two, to make sure. I, I'm assuming that whatever their attorney sent me was the final draft, or he would have responded.
It is.
To, okay, yeah.
Yeah, cuz it doesn't really specify from this point to that point, but it does tell. Yeah.
Because it's everything, it's that road that the township has, I mean, the parking lot is state ground.
And that was my only observation, was just to make sure when it comes time for, well, I thought the county was gonna maintain this. We're maintaining, so, um, but it, it, yeah, that's where I say Rod's probably is, is uh important of a person to make sure, but. Good call on that.
Rod, do you know who blades that, their driveway, or that parking lot or anything?
No one, as close as I can tell.
That's why I was, I just wondered if.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, I, you know, I don't go there often, but each time that I've gone, it's, it's pretty rough, you know, it'll be. There's rills that haven't been repaired for quite a while, as close as I can tell, on the washboard, yeah.
So, I will entertain a motion to. That I'll sign it if they approve it.
Yes, uh, make a motion to authorize, uh, Chairman Mocker to sign the agreement upon, uh. Approval by the township board.
I have a motion and a second, and my only discussion is if they deny it, I'll, or you know, if they turn it down, I'll just rip the paper up. Call it good, so, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Yeah, man.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mocker.
Yes, motion passes. Anything else, Lexi?
Oh.
What time's basketball game today?
Seven o'clock.
Really?
A point. It's gonna be a full house.
Yeah. We'll start with Drew with the comprehensive plan discussion.
Uh. After our meeting where we tabled the conference plan. And then we had a meeting with citizens in the library. Uh, before I take the conference plan or before I get comprehensive back to the planning zoning board, I wanted to know from you all. Board members, what direction we should be going moving forward and what are your guesses, everyone's thoughts? I try to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
So I, um, I, I think. People made a, a lot of comments that were substantive, um. And. And. Uh, so one, what, one is that, um. And I, I, I think this is kind of a central issue, uh, is. Trying to identify a vision, um, for the growth of the county. Um, that is a ten-year time horizon. I mean, that's kind of the point of a comprehensive plan of development. And so, um, you know, I think we need to get rid of the, uh, you know, sort of the annual updates, right? A comprehensive plan of development, um, is not something that's updated annually by law. It's updated every ten years. Um, so I, 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 you know, for starters, I'd certainly like to, um, to see that. Uh, there were a lot of concerns about, um, language and, um, the number of crossouts. And, uh, you know, uh, most people I think who spoke to the plan. Um, tended to think that the existing plan was preferable, um, to, um, to the proposed plan. Um, you know, I think, uh. You know, people talked a bit about taking climate change into account and so on. Um. You know, I think that there were some concerns about the Missouri National Recreation River. And the fact that we have a national park in our backyard. Uh, and that we ought to take steps to, um, preserve and protect that national park. And, you know, just reading through the national park documents, the founding documents. Um, you know, it, it's, it's pretty clear that that section, section seven that runs through Clay County. Is very unusual ecologically, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a national treasure. And, um, you know, the more that, uh, we allow, for example, rip wrapping the bank and, um. You know, doing the kind of development that requires rip wrapping banks, um, the less, um. Of a unique national treasure that, that space becomes. So we kind of have a role. Right in the, in the preserve, preservation of that park, um. Yeah, there were a lot of concerns about septic tank absorption. Um, you know, a sense that, um, that the plan did not, uh, take into account septic tank absorption, and I understand that. You know, the state regulates those things, but if we have a vision for the county. Um, and, and, you know, we, we really, we, we probably need to put something in there. Um, because we do have parts of the county that have a pretty, pretty fragile, um, ecosystem. That said, the map is wrong. There's no question that, um, that, that particular map is, I think what's probably wrong is just the labeling at the bottom. Um, but somebody, uh, at Seacog probably needs to take a very close look at that and, um. You know, we're kind of at a disadvantage because, uh, we've, we've lost the Seacog staff person that actually worked on this. And, uh, we have a brand new staff person who's only been there for a few weeks, so.
But that, Betty, that, that table at the bottom is actually correct. You can pull that, you can pull that report up online. And there was a study done and that's what they determined. Because I thought it was wrong too, and I, so I Googled it and it actually pulled up the report that that.
And where.
I forget who it was that did it and, uh. Because I, I thought maybe Dick would have been at the USD when they. When they would have done some of that for geological, but there was two, and I believe there were two professors that, that did this study, and I could be wrong on that part. But that map or their study mirrored exactly what that map showed.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I mean, that, that, that map is so counterintuitive. Um, I, you know, I, I, that even if it is what's online, I think we ought to ask the geological survey to take a second look. I mean, it's just.
So for those who weren't there, the map is showing that there is no place that should have a septic tank in the county.
Yeah, and that seems unreasonable to me, so I, I, I think we, we, we need to. Yeah, but it, it's also a very important map, so I, I think we need to double check that map and, and somehow figure out if we've. If we've got it, got it right or not, um. Yeah, and then there's this question about building codes, um, and, uh, you know, that's, that's a question. Uh, I guess in the past, people have discussed that we ought to have building codes, um, and, um, you know, this, this map, uh. Uh, you know, says, no. You know, when we do not plan on having a building code, and I think that's a matter for, uh, the commission to decide. Um, there was some discussion about whether we ought to, um. Uh, have some kind of cooperative relationship for building inspections. We did have a building code. Um, so that's, you know, that's, that's something, um, some, something to think about, um. Yeah, so I, you know, I, the, the, uh, John Prescott and city people had some concerns that there were inaccuracies in the plan. Um, and.
We got an email on that one, Betty. I don't know. Drew and I did anyway.
I didn't.
So there's no, so there's no rule or there's no place outside of joint jurisdiction. The part that this plan is talking about, the county or the city serves none of it. There's no, there's no power there and there's no water. So they, they made that correction in that email.
Oh, they did? Okay, okay, good, good, because that, I, that was a source of some concern. Um, you know, there was a question about stakeholders and the extent to which stakeholders had, um, had been engaged in, in the process and. You know, I, I mean, I, 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 I taught comprehensive plant development for over a decade. To master students in public administration and, you know, stakeholder consultation is, is, is really critical and, um. Yeah, so, so, so. All right, then joint jurisdiction, um. Uh, you know, if we need to reevaluate it, great, um, but, uh, you know, it would. I, I, I think it would be helpful to have a conscious process to do that, um. Yeah, so, so I, I, I guess I think, I think the plan, the plan needs work, um, and, uh. And, and the biggest concern though, I think if I were to say what kind of the theme of comments were, they were concerned about. The loosening of regulations and the language, um, that had been changed. Um, to words like shall consider instead of require. And, um, you know, the, so, so, so those were, those were concerns that were expressed and. I mean, I, it, you know, I, I think for anybody who wasn't there, it'd be worth watching the, um, video of, of, of the meeting and hearing, you know, from. You know, the people who spoke, what, what they had to say. There were certainly people there I had never seen, never met, um. And so we, we did, I think we did get, um, I mean, it was, it was a pretty crowded, crowded meeting. So I was glad to hear, to hear the feedback.
There was about forty people there.
Yeah, at least, I think.
That was the number Elias put in the paper.
Yeah.
Forty people that didn't have to be there.
Yeah.
Just regular citizens. I mean, take away Seacog, take away Drew, myself, Dick and Betty, Carrie. So I mean.
There was a comment, um, in reading and looking into, on the joint powers of which. I'll admit I had somewhat dropped the ball on that, although the comment from this. From member of the joint powers was that yes. The date of how long the landfill will last is essentially probably incorrect. Say lightly and. But it was time ten years ago to be looking at further purchase of land. For both environmental protections and expansion of the landfill. Now. That's something that Clay County needs, is the land owner along with Yankton County. And something to be discussed with Yankton County, whether it belongs in the comp plan to bring up the issue. I'll leave that to you guys, um. My comment, I have. From day one almost of being in the position of running landfill. At day one said we needed more land, so it didn't occur to me to put this in the comp plan. It is a reality. That it should be looked at.
Yeah, I'll add one more thing that, um, I think, uh, you know, I participated in the plan of. Development for the city of Vermillion, oh, you know, probably twenty years ago. And one of the things that came up there that it turned out, um, people really cared about. Was identifying recreational, um, opportunities. Uh, that could be developed like hiking trails and biking trails, um. You know, and, 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 you know, some, some of those things, there is, there's actually money for. We also have a rail line, um, going through our, uh, our, our community and so. Uh, you know, maybe a little more about the development of transportation, including alternative means of transportation would, um. You know, would, would, would be a smart, a smart way to go.
I think map three, you know, the septic system one, I don't think that probably came from geological survey.
It may not. I, I thought it would have, but, but it didn't, it didn't mention.
I don't think that I, the, the other map, the, the map, uh, Deft Daco from a trail, map number five. Yes, that's, uh, that's a series of maps that they started right about the time that I left the, the survey, so. That one's a survey map. I know that and I know the author of that. The Clay County Septic Tank Absorption Field Limitations. I'm not sure where that dropped in from. Uh, where I normally go to when I'm advising folks on that particular subject. Is go to the modern, modern soil survey put out by USDA. The Clay County Soil Survey, and I don't know what the. The new update, uh, is for that. I've got a copy of the last one and it's probably twenty or more years old. A modern soil survey from, for Clay County from the USDA. Soil Conservation Service.
So that, that first map, that was. It was Douglas Ma- MaLo. And it was done in nineteen eighty-three.
Nineteen eighty-three and who, who's he worked for?
Yeah.
And how did we, how did we end up using his map?
Well, I think Seacog threw it in there because it was, I mean, it was done for Clay County, this absorption map.
That's quite possible, but I, yeah, I do.
And I don't, I don't remember. Is that the same one that was in the last comprehensive plan?
Uh.
Drew says yes.
It is, yeah. Unchanged. Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised by it because I, uh. I can't, I wouldn't necessarily agree to, to the classification system. In fact, I know I wouldn't agree to it. It wouldn't necessarily is.
Well, I'm just saying where it came from. I mean.
Correct.
How it.
I, I'll bet you we can do better. Using, uh, S, the SES data. They, uh, SES data is based on, as you know, when the soil survey is done. Uh, and the, uh, nice crew goes out and does soil probes to sixty inches at hundreds of places all over the county. Uh, their sites are selected on their interpretation of the geomorphology that they're, they're working on and, uh. I can, there's normally a, a whole section, probably a couple of pages describing. Which soil types are suitable for septic tank use. And, uh, there's another one on building use and, uh, from my point of view, that's. Uh, that's better on the ground data. Likely than what we're looking at here. This looks pretty broad brush to me.
Just, that was like I said, I, I didn't read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Just getting an overview here. They, they took a lot of liberties with that map.
Yeah.
Um, because the study area on this other, on this map, once you get into it. Is the, is the flood plain. I mean, it's the Vermillion River flood plain and. Uh, I call it the Franklin Bottom.
Yeah.
But then they took that and then just. So I didn't fill everything else in.
Yeah. Do you have any more copies of that?
Uh, not only, but I can get.
Yeah, I'd like to have one. Yeah, I, I went to the meeting with just the. The, the one that was by itself, not the marked up one. And when I got, I got the markup one that evening in the meeting, of course, and, uh, I was a little surprised about, uh, how the plan had. Uh. Been cooked down a lot more. And, uh, and I, I, I do think that, uh, the meeting itself was a good idea. I think that, uh. There are other counties that are, have been in the past and I pointed at one, at least one out to Drew where, uh. Comprehensive plans were put together by planning, planning, uh. Uh, and zoning boards and, uh. Uh, they presented it, uh, to the Commission for Adoption. And that meeting is where everybody showed up, said, whoa, wait a minute, we didn't know anything about this. And, uh, in fact, uh, the one that I presented to, uh, to Drew was, uh. The Woodbury County one. And Woodbury County, they went through the whole process in two thousand and three. Uh, they actually approved it, but there was enough, uh. Uh, dissent in the. Property owner, owners of the, of the county that that was almost immediately rescinded. They started the whole process over and spent another two years, a little over two years to build a whole new plan. And in fact, the first ten pages of the, of the new plan. Was a discussion of how they, they felt like they messed up, hadn't involved. And, uh, described how they started over. So I, I think what we did, having the, the meeting helped us. Get a better sense of where the, where our constituents are, and I think it's a. I'm not saying we have to start all over, but I'm saying that in the, when I went through the markup plan, the first twenty pages or so, I. You know, I don't think there was a page on there where I didn't have. Uh. A comment of substance. It, uh, there were other comments of, of how, of, uh. Style, style and form, but, uh, I think that there's, there's plenty of room to, to work on it.
When it comes to the crossouts, that was all Kristen. She went through, I mean, you remember that night.
It was, the crossouts were the, to keep us out of court.
Yeah.
Unless Lexi's got time. But that was, that was what her, she's like, you, you can't defend this.
Who was this?
Kristen was Seacog.
Okay. I, I went through the first time and made some cuts and I was very cautious how I did that.
Yeah.
And Kristen went at it with, uh. Belt fed weed eater. I mean, she, she gutted that thing. I mean, I, I was kind of embarrassed, I think, because I had made some cuts and she, she went much farther than. Than I had in her.
You know, in, in the end, this is our comprehensive plan and I remember when, um. The city of Vermillion had precisely the same problem with Seacog. Um, Seacog had, um, headed up their comprehensive plan, um, process. And when they finally had a. And when they finally had a meeting at the end of the whole process, after spending a couple of years doing it, people were really upset, they really, really didn't like the changes that Seacog made. And you know, I think that two Seacog folks who were there the other night were very clear, this is your plan. It's not, it's not our plan. And I, you know, I think we're, we're in the driver's seat here. And I, you know, what 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 the city of Vermillion did after that was uh, they had a whole series of interactive public workshops. And you know, in many ways, that was what drove the redevelopment of downtown Vermillion. It drove the development of bike paths, it drove the development of a lot of the livability features that people in the city like so much. And you know, I I mean, Se- Se- Seacog, they 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 think like engineers and I, I love engineers. I I, the work that they do is absolutely essential. But in the end, I think our job is to create a plan for livability for every citizen in the county. And you know, I I, that's not what we have here. And and so what I, what I'd like to see is this become more of a I I, and I think Travis, your point all along has been that this needs to be a broader document. And I I agree with that, but the broader document to me needs to have a vision and a series of goals and 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 a map of where we want to be ten years from now. And 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 that map ought to reflect the preferences of of the residents, all the residents of the county.
So I think what we're gonna get caught up here too is what's your definition of livability? Because there's fifteen thousand people in this county and we're gonna get fifteen thousand different answers.
Yeah, so there, there's, there's a lot of data on this, right? There's a lot of data on what constitutes livability and it's, you know, there are ways, of course, of communicating with the public and finding out what those things are. I've been a part of those processes many times over the years. And um, there are things like aesthetic preference surveys, right? Which are, you know, you got a bunch of people in the room and you show them a series of pictures and what, what do you prefer, right? And 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 there are ways of bringing people together to talk about their their vision and and the primary goals for the county for the next ten years. And you know, that this, this, this has been done across the country, the AARP has this whole body of research available for free on creating livable communities. And you know, I I really think we, we have a lot of very happy people in this county. I mean, who love this county, you know, who are here by choice. You know, who have no reason to be here other than they love, they love what it is. And um, you know, the what attracts people to play is, is livability. And there are actually indexes, right, for 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 livability. So, you know, I think those things, those things matter. And um, you know, people may or may not know exactly what those things are. I mean, for example, people often say, uh, parking, parking is our biggest problem. But when you come right down to it, if you, if it, people actually uh, don't like a lot of parking. They don't go places where parking is king. So, you know, I I I I think there, we need to ask people in targeted ways about uh, you know, their 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 preferences and 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 what matters to them in the long run. And then work, work toward that.
I I agree with a bunch of that. The part that I would like to see is more I find the example of parking is a city problem, not a county problem. So, we need to come up with the county methodology and terms to ask, to make sure we're getting answers for the full county. What is livability for someone who lives in Vermillion is very different from one who lives out closer to Beersford. So, getting the input or the comments and thoughts. Or, you know, having a plan that really deals with the county. I feel, you know, I agree with more green, more emphasis on what we're dealing with of climate change in the future. Are we actually, what level of what? Sorry. My brain only is half functioning. Future construction and, you know, future expansion is available in water. And, yeah, you've talked about the septic systems, et cetera. Electric out in the county. What can we stand for? Future growth. And what should we be pushing for?
So the electric, we're, we're good there with the REA, they can, they can handle anything that comes. You know, that's, depending on what would happen, I mean, that that's where the positioning would come if they needed three phase there. There's certain areas along major corridors that have the three phase. Clay Rule Water Plant is in the process of building a new water plant, so they're gonna upgrade and upsize that. So we should be, so for the time period that this comprehensive plan is going to cover in the near future, we should be good there. And then, you know, as far as what what Betty calls livability or whatever, I mean, the comments from the townships. Drew, what were the top two comments from the townships that they wanted to see?
They want to get rid of the junkyards and they want more key booths.
Now, that's not gonna play well with the people that were at that room the other night. Because that definitely was not a cross section of the county that was there. So, the definition of livability is going to have fifteen thousand different answers. I don't know how to put something like that in there. We need to, we need to understand, we, neither side needs to dominate what this comprehensive plan is gonna be.
I think that's what I was trying to say also, thank you.
Because to me, livability means making a living and allowing my kids to stay here and make a living.
I also just want to chime in from the standpoint of what was said about red line things. You know, we pay Seacog to provide services for us and I don't see the need to double up on beyond, there's specific things you guys want me to, to look into, I can do that. I do have some serious concerns about if Seacog has removed something in a red line version because they've identified that this is gonna cause us legal problems. I'd be very cautious about putting that language back in. Case law on zoning continues to evolve over the course of time. And it sure as heck has evolved in the last ten years since we've done this. And so, it, and that's the thing, so twenty years, yeah, so when we sit here and look at that, if there are things that they have removed because they're gonna play it cautious, I think that's partly their job and that's gonna be my job too. Because if we put things into language into our comprehensive plan that that statute and I shouldn't even limit it to case law, we've had statutory updates as as zoning law continues to evolve. So I just want to make sure that whatever we're looking at, when we, when we look to expand the language to things that we want from a standpoint of quality for our county comprehensive plan, that we also keep those things in line from a a legally defensible position. Because the comprehensive, I mean, the zoning ordinance are things that we can change and do change in in different fashion. But the comprehensive plan is 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 designed to stick with us for quite a period of time and I, and I want us to be, I don't want conflicts between those two and I want to make sure that it's legally defensible with current statute and case law. Identified some things, I think we need to listen to that.
Yeah, and I I, those, so um, you know, I think I'm, I'm actually pretty attuned to uh, zoning, you know, because of my uh, my background. And things like the whole section on parks and open spaces being removed are not statutory issues, right? I I I think that's a substantive issue, right?
Come back in, we've already got drafts prepared to put that back in.
But what, what constitutes an open space?
He's got, in the draft that Jason has already, just got me this morning, well, and a little bit last night. Including the Spirit Mom Park, Clay County Park and the Alabama Bend Recreation Area.
Yeah, probably also ought to put in the Frost, uh, the Frost Trail, um, which is a, you know, it's an extensively used. I think it's BLM land. And uh, you know, there, there are potential other, you know, what foot, footpath opportunities, right, along, along public, public rights of way. That the um, the DOT Master Plan, Master Transportation Plan Committee is, is looking at right now. So there, you know, there are a lot of opportunities, for example, working with the Missouri National Recreation River. Those guys are excited about this national park and there are certainly things that we could do to enhance the experience of the national park that our own, our own citizens have. So, yeah, I mean, I I I I think if anything, parks and open spaces probably ought to be expanded and we ought to think about um, what what we want, what we want in in the future.
So how do we put in the Missouri River National Park when it's not within the borders of the county?
Well, it actually goes right, it is the border of the county, right?
I said within the border of the county, because that's what this plan is, is for, is what's inside our borders.
Well, what's inside our borders fronts on a national park. And so, you know, to me, that seems very, very significant and we we probably ought to give it some thought. You know, in the research I did years ago, it was just amazing to me how many people that I would never guess would care about the river actually see it as something that they want more of in their life. And 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 so I, I think that, yeah, I mean, I I I I think we need to take that into account in in planning.
Is our county border coincide with the state line or does it stop at the river's edge?
Stops at the river's edge because that's a national park. Now, the state border is in the middle of the river.
Correct.
Somewhere, middle, we call middle of the river.
So we've got state land that the county has no
Federal land.
Federal, that's what I mean, it's uh, state and federal land that that goes to the, well, state land because the state boundary goes down through the the fall leg of the river. And there, like say, we used to think that Goat Island was, was uh, perhaps part of Clay County because it was part of South Dakota. And the, the new boundary commission work had shown that it's essentially in 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 Nebraska. Just a point on that, you know, whether that distinction or not, I think that we really should think in terms of our comprehensive plan that the National Scenic River is a resource to us. So, I'm not sure how to, how to handle that going forward, that would have legal implications. But uh, I think the main point, over overarching, each in main point that we need to think about here is that there are pages of red line here that was in the first parts of of the document. Those pages, every plan should start out with an assessment of where you are at that moment. At that point, twenty twenty-two, we need to have a, a complete and uh, logical assessment of where we stand. And for the, the public in parks area, that ought to, that ought to include game production land. No, that's not necessarily county owned land, but that's, that's a public resource that's within the, within Clay County that is part of this open space discussion. There are a number of others, you know, we, we Xed out all of the school district stuff. As far as uh, those school districts or those school resources are resources that are part of what makes Clay County what it is. And uh, yes, the school districts are not part of what county government does expressly, but it is part of what we have to manage. Therefore, really asking each of those school districts how, how does your, your uh, planning for the future coincide with what we want to do here? Joint planning with the, with the cities, with uh, any of a number of other, other groups like the rural water and the, and the, in the rural electric system. Those should be still within our plan as far as parts of current county resources that are there for us to build uh, the future of the, the county on. So I disagree with excluding all of those points. I don't see how the hell they could be a problem as far as, as legal restraints on uh, what we put in here would be opening us up to uh, future lawsuits and I'd love to go point by point and have uh, have that planner that did that explain to me how any one of those uh, ends up being a source of of lawsuits.
So they exclude, I didn't see that part, they excluded the REA and
They excluded, exclude like, for instance, the listing of uh, all the school districts in the they're just a that's what I happen to have open to me right here, but uh, schools, parks and open spaces that those, those sections went from uh, three pages to uh, two paragraphs.
So she excluded them because there was no physical school?
There was, yeah, that was her, we started off contacting all the school districts. I think we heard back from everybody, but there's one school, I would say Gayville. And then somewhere in there was, well, none of these school districts, none of the school buildings and uh, facilities, obviously districts are, but the school buildings and facilities, none of those were accounted for. That kind of followed similar thought as, none of the city utilities were in the county jurisdiction. That was, that was the general thought.
Except she did miss Wakanda, elementary schools in Wakanda.
I'm just saying in general, those are, those are really important resources to the the culture.
But it's noted now though, isn't it, that we have seven school districts in the count, within the county?
Yeah, it's uh, yeah, and it's, it's noted, but it doesn't really list that is how that makes us different than uh, from, from uh, other places. We, we've got a pretty good s- system of schools here, uh, ranging in sizes, you know, that, that are that are important to what makes uh, Clay County livable, to use, use Betty's terminology. Those are important parts of it, in fact, they, they end up being a core of the culture of each of the each of these uh, districts or these uh, these towns.
But are we using this document to attract people or to write our zoning ordinances?
We got a planning, what we would need to do is plan on what's gonna happen in the future uh, and how we support that as a, as a county. What's, what's the future likely to be? Or are we gonna end up with more consolidation of of school districts? What are the, what are the trends as far as population within each of these uh, townships? Those population trends too should be updated using current data, not like two, two thousand and eighteen data. The demographics need to be two thousand and twenty real census data, not the stuff from two thousand and eighteen. That was really plain to me is that those uh, two thousand and eighteen numbers were way off. Uh, we're, what the real numbers are for two thousand twenty is what we in here project for two thousand forty. We're just not using, we're not using, we're not giving an accurate picture of where Clay County is in two thousand twenty-two by these, these first, uh, sets. So what are, our assets and resources are. And therefore, we cannot really accurately look ahead to where we want to be and how our, 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 our plan should go ahead over the next twenty years. I, I just see that this was, was, uh, there are important parts that were gutted and it might be that there's, there's legal reasons for that, but, uh, if there are, I for one would, uh, ask for a logical reason for that.
So you're basically saying that you wanted to start the scratch.
I think that we need to, to back up.
Now you got different people on there, you got Jason on there.
Yeah, yep.
Where you didn't have him before.
Yeah, he's been on.
Yeah, he's been on it.
Yeah, he's been on.
Okay, but you said in somebody, the person that did a lot of this is gone?
Kristin's gone.
Kristin's gone, was she the main cog on it?
Yeah.
She was, so.
That and the planning and zoning board.
Right, right, but I mean, that helped you with CCOG.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's important to remember too that, uh, Andrew has now left, what it is two weeks or whatever it was.
Okay.
So.
That, that's, that's been a problem all along, you know, I, when I was on city planning and zoning in the nineties, uh, you know, we ended up going through, uh, planning and zoning help from CCOG. In the five years I was on the board, I think we had two, you know, we ended up with three, three sets of planners that helped us. Uh, because we were starting actually the, uh, planning process of doing a new comprehensive plan for the city back then. And as Betty's pointed out, that, uh, that didn't really make, make fruition until two thousand eight or thereabouts. Uh, we were fooling with it or messing with it for, in the range of more than ten years. In other words, half a planning cycle. And in part, I think that was because our ex, our, the expertise we were leaning on had a constant turnover.
So right now, the only one that you really have that's been there the whole time is Jason. So going forward.
For three weeks.
For three weeks, he's only been on it three weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
There's no.
Make it tough.
And our main, uh, uh, Ja- Jason is actually assigned elsewhere. Our main CCOG, uh, representative is Sophie Johnson, who just started a few weeks ago. And she's, she's, uh, you know, she came to the meeting, you know, she's still in training, but she'll be the person who will work with us going forward.
So they told us Jason was our guy.
So the good part about that is we got a fresh set of eyes, I guess.
Background of Sophie here.
Sophie has an MPA, um, from, uh, USD. And, uh, so I, I remember her from her MPA days, I don't know, um, you know, I, she's, she's been doing professional, um, management work since, but, um, but that's her basic background.
So one of the problems of CCOG has been hiring low pay and you know, putting people who are onto a job that are learning on the job, let's put it that way.
Sure, she's right there.
Well, I think they're losing a lot of people to Sioux Falls. So they, they tend to train people and then, uh, their personnel move to, uh, to, you know, some, some part of Sioux Falls planning and they, 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 they lose their, they lose their expertise. Hopefully will keep Sophie Johnson for at least a while. But I think Jason is, um, uh, you know, really assigned during, during the transition. And, um, because he has more experience, um, you know, they're not, they, they have not made Sophie responsible for our, our plan.
So the one that you have on the website, that's the original one from?
Uh, that's the one on my website right now.
Yeah.
Is the,
No.
Uh, the one we brought for the board, what, two, three weeks ago?
Okay, so that's that one there.
Yeah.
Cause you had both the old one and the new one on the website, I think, which is appropriate.
Yeah.
Is it, I didn't find the old one on the web.
I don't find the old one, I only find the.
Yeah, the old one might not be there now, it can be on back up there in a moment.
Yeah, cause I had the old one before and I don't have it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the most helpful copy, I think, for the public would be the marked up copy that CCOG has. Um, it shows exactly what's been added and what's been subtracted. Uh, and I think that would be awfully, awfully useful for, um, for the public.
Yeah, that was helpful to me. I, you know, and I think that, uh, you know, we're getting not necessarily thinking in terms of starting all over, I think that what we've got is a good starting point. Uh, you know, and I think, uh, a combination of the, uh, using the red line to copy, I think is a good starting spot. Uh, and, you know, in, in defense, you know, that, uh, Drew's kind of knew it all this, you know, it's, uh, started out where our, our expertise from CCOG are perpetually new, I think we're, we're sort of, uh, establishing that. And, uh, we have the same problems in this process as we've had in some other areas where the COVID has really made it so it's much harder for us all to get together and to have everybody in the room that ought to be, uh, part of this process. And, uh, where we as residents of the, of the county can have a, a better, have better input on how this thing should be built. We've, uh, I, I really believe that the, uh, I haven't been a part of the, this process, but I have to believe that, uh, uh, the COVID issues have hurt this process also. It made it so it was not quite as complete, it's not quite done perhaps. Uh, not as complete as, as, uh, it could be. And, uh, I, I think that it could move ahead pretty quickly using, using the, the start that we've got here.
So you want to take it back to the planning and zoning or do you want to take it from here?
I, I think we ought to give them a chance to look through it. I think that the new, new planning help from, uh, uh, CCOG could, could, uh, have a, have a look at this too. And, uh, we can, uh, we can take advantage of those fresh eyes.
When, if I remember, again, memory's a little shaky, but when I first came on, we were going through the KFO rewrite of which we had two commission members, two planning zone, the zoning, you know, professional and then two from uh, volunteer residents or whatever you want to call them, to review and make suggestions. Um, it was basically what, a seven person panel to go through and look and make recommendations and suggestions. I think that would not, I think it would be a positive move to have something of that sort.
I'm done.
I guess I would go along with Dick in a, in a respect that I think we take it back to the zone, zoning board, let you guys work on it. I think that from what, I haven't got a chance to read through this red lined out one yet. I've read through this about three or four times, I've read through the old one and when it was on the website. But I think that, uh, if we go back and let you guys go back over it and, you know, if, if there's things in here that need to be put back in, you know, like the parks, like you pointed out, the schools, I think that sounds like that would be something that should be put back in. I cannot see where that would be a problem as far as legal. I mean, I guess, that's not my expertise by any means, but I can't see where that would be. So I, and hopefully we have somebody from CCOG that's on there for a period, a long enough period of time that, that they can help you out, because that's, I think that's your problem, those guys are supposed to be your experts. And if they're keep changing, that doesn't do you a bit of good.
It would have been very helpful by Kristen at that.
Yes, I, I'm sure you're right.
Yeah, it would, but we got into a lot of discussions, but I think before CCOG finished their, their discussion that night.
Right.
So, yeah, that, that was, we got off on some.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming anybody from CCOG.
They weren't really nice. Part of the, part of what the, the whole, whole discussion ought to be. Uh, and I was just wondering, you know, there's places like the demographic data, the, the current census data. For instance, that current land use map on map six that shows, uh, uh, all the farm places. Geez, I wonder how current that can be.
That's very, pretty current.
Is it?
A couple of years, I know Christian spent some time on that.
Yeah, so.
She had some GIS, I, early on that map actually was a lot denser for a number of farm places.
Yeah.
Uh, because kind of included just any grove of trees, because that's what her software and GIS stuff.
But that just include, that's just, it's not really farm places, it's rural residents.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's, there's two classifications, yellow is, uh, rural residential and then, uh, the red triangles are farm places and that's what, wow, it's, uh.
She really struggled, yeah, that was a lot of.
That looks like kind of, uh, it isn't, uh.
We include a lot of farm places.
It, it looks a little different than I thought it would be, you know, because I had gone through this, this exact, uh, analysis when I was working through my distance to, uh, cathos. You know, I made a map of the, I had a map of the, the whole, uh, county and then went through and, and measured distances and figured out, well, geez, how many places under, under current law or under current separation? Uh, so many feet of this, so many feet of that, how many places could you actually put a, a catful at this point? And I came up with that, that reduced the places that you could legally put one, uh, dramatically. I mean, that was, cut it down to, uh, a few, if, at the most, a few dozen, uh, more like a dozen locations where you could actually put a place.
You're talking larges?
Pardon me?
You're talking larges?
Yeah.
So there's three in the county.
There was about three for large, yes. About three for larges, but even mediums was, you know, by the time you figure out the distances to the nearest residence. And that's what, when I looked at this map, this, that kind of opened that page for me again. Whoa, wow, this is, yeah, this is interesting. I wish I'd have had that map instead of mine, if this is a fairly current map.
There's supposed to be three hundred and thirty-seven farms.
Yeah.
Technical farms, I guess, in the county. I don't know what they come up with that now, how they derived at that number.
Farm places, there's more, there's more red triangles on this map than, than that, I think. Yeah.
Well, anyway.
You know, I, I wonder if it would be useful to, um, annotate each map with the source and the date. Um, just for future commissions, um, and, uh, for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Where did, where did each map come from so that, you know, twenty years from now, they're not looking online, trying to figure out, where did this map come from, how old is it, is it accurate, you know?
These are labeled mainly as CCOG maps, but they're, the source data isn't necessarily, uh, labeled and, and I agree with that, I think it's important to have source data labeled on any map.
And date.
I know I'm not helping a lot here.
No, no, I, 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 I write it all down and, uh, I think the, uh, I think, like, looking through my notes here, I've got kind of three main points here, essential vision, uh, ad language about the landfill, uh, the septic map. More green, talk about climate change, uh, parks and open spaces, that's already going back in, schools will come back in, um, population data. And I think that's, that gives us a, a very, that gives me a very, right? Yeah.
I, I think the important thing to remember for the planning, uh, planning board is that any plan, first you have to have to establish very accurately where you're at now. That's that first several pages of this thing. And then building on that, what are reasonable expectations going forward?
Where we at, where we're going.
Where do we want to go and what is the, a reasonable, uh, a reasonable plan to achieve, achieve where we want to go? Got to be doable. It can't be nothing and it can't be part of the sky. But I think that first part is really important, we need to first establish where we're at now. And that means all of these, these resources that were in the original red line part, you know, yes, they, they need, uh, those red line parts aren't accurate today. Uh, but, uh, and then some of them may be superfluous, can be condensed. But, uh, in general, uh, they, it has to be, there has to be enough there to give us an accurate picture of where we are today.
Sounds like, uh, the beginning of a plan, so.
You know, and then building codes, you know, that was brought up, so, you know, on your home, the, if you, if you put a new panel or, or rewire, that's, there's a state inspector that will come out and inspect those.
Correct.
Not, not can, he will, uh, and along with the plumbing. Yeah, so I don't, I catch a lot of feet or a lot of flack on the joint jurisdiction area from the people who live there when the city has to come out and do building inspections, because that's part of that joint jurisdiction that they do building inspections. People are wondering why we have to do those.
For my place in joint jurisdiction, it was, uh, I think the city plumbing guy came out, but it was the state electrical inspector that inspected my building. I'm not sure about plumbing, I guess.
I mean, to say we don't have any building, you know, in its inspections. And we don't allow multifamily housing units either, so that's.
Well, no family housing, actually. Other than existing, existing firm stuff.
No, we let residents.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
But, but multifamily, like, yeah, like an apartment buildings or stuff like that, we don't allow that, so.
Yeah, building code. We could leave language in there that at some point we want to explore building code, uh, I think in the old comp, I think, you know, in the futures, the county may explore, uh, building code, but short term, unless the board is, is, wants to go for it, I, I have one person in the last, since I started, because he got into an argument with us. Wanted to just come out and do an inspection. And other than that, any other time inspection brought up and I say, no, everybody's really happy. Uh, in fact, I think we've had some people move into the county because we don't have, there were one, one guy I'm thinking of came from Minnesota. We found out about our inspections, he was just, he was very happy that we didn't have anything.
Well, with the number of building permits we have, can we afford to have a building inspector? No, I mean, for, for general, you know, it, that's not necessarily a rhetorical question, you're right.
Uh, you know, twenty-two, uh, last year was a high score, twenty, or twenty-two new homes, that was the record for years. So two houses a month, not even on average, uh, having a, having a building inspector or having, maybe get qualified on that, that's a lot of, that's a lot of extra stuff to take on, uh. that's a lot of extra stuff to take on, uh, that'd be beyond what I could do for the. That's, we'd have to look at somebody else for that. Now, I, I could do it, but I'd have to shed some other responsibility somewhere else. And for two houses a month.
Yeah.
We got a lot of, we get a lot of accessory structures too. And a lot of those building permits are farm shops and grain bins.
And I just wondered what kind of building codes a lot of these buildings would fit into. Because a lot of them are like, well, I built it because this is what I needed to do, but it doesn't fit code.
Yeah, well, you know, the universal building code, it's national and international and, and essentially, yes. Exactly. And, uh, and essentially the, even the city building inspector, the city really adapts the UBC just like the state adapts the UBC. And, uh, so they're really applying that fat batch of code. And it's got commercial sections, so it wouldn't necessarily be just a residential houses. But that's some of the more important parts of the UBC.
And almost all of our builders, because we've got three, four primary builders that are committing for building permits, they build in town as well as in the city. They're familiar with code and.
Right.
And why, yeah, they, 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 the main structural stuff, you know, is what we're concerned about. And there are building to code for the bolt sparking. There might be some young guys skip on drywall for fire protection and stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I feel like at least for the time being, we've got bigger fish to fry. Um, and, uh, you know, if we can get a good, uh, a good comprehensive plan of development. Um, you know, I, I, I think some of these other issues are, are off, off in the future. Um, I, I, I'd really like to see us get a, a, a good, solid, comprehensive plan of development that, uh, you know, helps citizens visualize where, where we're going and helps us, um, you know, uh, create suitable zoning ordinances that move the county in the direction that citizens would like to see it move in. And I'm good with sending this back to, um, uh, to the planning and zoning. I mean, I, I, I think that it, that's, that's where, that's where the development of it really belongs.
Take it back. That gives us some stuff to work on even for that, uh, because we canceled meeting last night. I didn't know what our plan was going to be, but that, yeah, this will give us time to get some of this put together and have it in front of the board for, well, the end of this month. So.
Oh, good. Thanks, Drew. So, yeah, I, you know, I hate to, to load them up, you know, but I know that, uh, except I've been in this. When I was on the city planning commission, you know, it, uh, was really frustrating to me when send something to city council, I bounce it back into our, our, uh, lap or, or where she had over, just overrule us with, without, uh, really, uh, as much expen- explanation as I thought I was due. But yes, uh, with those apologies, yeah, I'd like to have you take another look.
I don't think so. Anybody else have anything else?
I have a couple of things. Okay, first off, I, not for you, but. First off, yesterday I had a BDC meeting and at the BDC meeting, it was asked about, uh, moving forward with the jail and wanted to know when the election was going to be. And I, whenever it come out of the board, I said, June. And they wanted to know, they thought it would be very important that we turn around and get some information out there, what it's going to do to your taxes. I said, I think until we get a drawing up and get the exact dollars, we can't really give that. So I just thought I'd tell you guys, because they said that there's been, uh, Greg Peters told me that there's been a lot of people that have been talking about it. How much it's going to raise their taxes. I said, well, we don't know that until we get the final, you know, drawings and stuff.
But we'll have, we'll have those numbers before you guys pass the resolution to call the election. So I mean, that's something that'll happen within the next few weeks.
That's what I thought. That's like.
I think after that, we can easily get those numbers out there.
Yeah, so when will they have? Have you talked to them? When did they think they could?
I didn't, I didn't hear anything back from them yet. Okay, so. Um, Travis and I talked yesterday and, and he's going to be gone on the fifteenth and I think Dick, you were going to be gone.
I'll be gone. Is, is there going to be provision that we could zoom in?
Could, um, Travis suggested maybe having it on the eleventh instead if everybody's available.
But I think Dick's leaving tomorrow.
Yeah, no. But, well, actually, my plan is to leave on the twelfth.
So I mean.
So the eleventh is Friday, right?
Yeah, Friday could work. I do have a nine o'clock, uh, doctor's appointment and I doing meals on wheels over noon, but I can do that Friday. With those provisions.
And I may not always zoom for anybody that, you know, can't be in person, but.
And that's hoping they have the numbers. They're supposed to have them by the fifteenth.
Okay.
We're hoping they could have them by the eleventh to present to us.
Yeah, and I hadn't heard back from them by the end of the day yesterday and, and still haven't, so.
I guess the main topic was that they thought we need to do, and we already know that, to do a lot more advertising when it does come out to tell people what's going on. And I think that's an important part of it too. I agree. And the other thing I had was I've been working with, uh, SESDAQ on Birmingham Transit and with the Fair Board. We're still working. That's about as far as I'm going to say right now. I forget, we're getting there though. I mean, it's, I've talked to both sides. Right now, the, and I called, talked to the guy that's the head of, uh, transit for the state, Jake. Jake, yeah, very nice guy to talk to. And he basically, what he told me was it was up to bars and Yunnella. If they wanted to let him use the building or not. That's exactly what he told me. And right now, I guess I can tell you that is that they're, right now, they do not want to let him use the bill for the Fair Board. Uh, I talked to Missy the other day, but Missy was going to be gone. I talked to John at the city. There is nothing, there's no agreement. The only agreement that they have on file is the one that you gave me between the, between the county and the city. There is nothing between SESDAQ and the city. I was surprised. There's nothing on file for her that he could find. He did send me a, because Missy asked me what, what they actually had for, for ground. Because she said she could work with them if they would turn around and, and I haven't talked to Missy yet back about this or, or SESDAQ. Is that they would, she would like to have the concrete. She said she's fine without the building. But she'd like to have the concrete where they park their vehicles. Well, I don't know how that's going to work. Yeah, that's not going to work very well because, and they're not going to be able to get into their place. So I mean, it's like a drawing party both ways. So I did get the drawing that, that, uh, he sent me. And on the drawing, it basically shows that most of the concrete is SESDAQ. It's the way it looks to me like. It's a little bit, I've got it on my phone. That's the way I got it on right now, but it looks to me like, and I've talked to Ina Ina this morning and she said there's nothing been, ever been plotted.
Right.
So it's, so whatever that drawing got here was what they got for the grant to begin with. So that's kind of where I'm at there. So.
So is it?
Go ahead.
Is there property around the building?
Yes.
That's theirs.
Yep. And Missy told me that she would no longer take care of that ground. I understand that. She said that's, there's to mow and stuff, but the drawing actually goes into the baseball field. What I look, it looks like the baseball field on the map that I got.
SESDAQ has some of that.
Yeah, it looks like it. I mean, from what I could see here. See if I can bring it up again. What I could see
Geez, we're going to have to hire a surveyor here or something.
That looks to me like, if you, if I'm looking at it, that looks like that's going into the baseball field. So, and but, that being said, John told me that he thought that there wasn't, you know, they just drew something out so they could get the grant. He doesn't think it's the most accurate thing in the world.
Yeah.
But in that respect, I can understand that in the future, that the Fair Board is not, if they can't have the ground, they can't use it. I can see where they can say, well, we're not going to mow it and stuff like that and trim around it. I get that. I mean, I, I'd feel the same way. So that being said, that's where I'm at right now. So we're going to meet with them. I'm going to meet with them. Missy's gone to California because of the back day. So I'll talk to her, talk to Barb and stuff. Go for it. It's been, it's been fun.
I don't know if you guys have been following the legislative stuff on funding for county infrastructure stuff. And last, last week's plane talk on a fine reading of it, we had a, a sentence or so in there and said that, uh, there are three counties that are, it got appropriation bills and uh, to build new jails, uh, but Clay County wasn't one of them. And, uh, so I decided, hmm, maybe I better delve into this because I had been following those three bills pretty closely. And they were for Deadwood, they, they asked for a regional jail, but for the state legislature to appropriate them. Uh, I think it was ten million, ten million dollars in federal funds and ten million dollars in ARPA funds. Uh, Lincoln County's asked for, asked for money and, uh, up at Aberdeen, they, they'd asked for money. Uh, each of them had money appropriated and, uh, the, uh, governor's office and the Bureau of Finance and Management testified against all of them. They didn't make it out of committee because of that. Uh, and it was found that, uh, though they asked for ARPA funds, ARPA funds are not eligible for that sort of, uh, project. So I kind of, I, I'd kind of gone into the whole thing, uh, assuming that, and that assuming that it wouldn't be fair to other counties to, uh, uh, finance ours. Uh, and, uh, that's, uh, apparently the, uh, at least two of the committees in the legislature have agreed with that.
But hopefully they get us our half cent sales tax.
That would be a great thing.
Now, the senator that is in Lincoln County, he's actually the sponsor on it.
Ernie Otten, I think.
And he's been against us the last two or three times.
Correct.
So I'm hoping now that goes through. And that's going to be a whole nother can of worms that we're going to somehow, if it were to go through on the funding for the, this half cent. Somebody's going to have to explain to the public why we need to pass a bond. And then come back and pass this half cent sales tax. They, they, they need to understand that, that we're not going to be double dipping. Right. And the best way that I've been able to explain it to people, because even in peer, they're sitting there going, well, you're going to, you're going to have all this extra money and you're double dipping and I look at it as the sales tax is your, is your teenager wanting to buy a car. They're pledging to pay it. The bond or the parent, the cosigner. If this person fails to meet their obligation, then the, then the bond has to step in and make up whatever they're lacking. Because if sales tax were happening to fall off and not meet projections, property tax has to pay with the gap. But we got to somehow get that across to the public that we're not double dipping.
Right. But at, at any rate too, on those, those, uh, those other counties asking for money, that, uh, that's where, that's where it ended up and we didn't think to do something like that because, uh, I, in my opinion at least, is that, uh, that was a dead end to start with. Each one of those lost in committee by like, well, on the one in Lincoln County, uh, uh, it was eight to one because the, uh, sponsor, co-sponsor of the bill was for it. He voted for it anyway. That they all lost by, uh, they were all eight, eight to zero, nine to zero, thirteen to zero, whatever it was. There were no affirmative votes on any of them to get them out of committee.
And ten thirty-nine died.
Yeah.
But now there's a subsequent bill coming. I don't know. Once it died, one of the committee members came over to whoever was talking against it. He was a senator also. And she's like, well, you got your way. Let the games begin.
Yeah.
So there's something going on now.
It's getting her onto that part of every legislate, legislative session where, where, where folks are, are getting a little grumpy.
It happens. I always look forward to the forty-first day where I'm like, I didn't screw too much up.
So.
I will move to adjourn.
Second that. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those, roll call.
Um, Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.